Allow all the Hampton County Council meeting to order for June sixteenth, twenty twenty five at six o'clock PM this evening. I'd like to thank you all for coming out this evening to our county council meeting, related officials, appointees, and also staff and also the public. Thank you for coming out this evening. With that being said, we're going to go to item number two on the agenda, education and pledge of allegiance. We have an implication by Councilman Love and the Pledge of Allegiance. I will give you the Pledge of Allegiance with the audience and listeners. So everyone please stand if you can.
Let us pray. Most holy everlasting God, we come to you right now, your darling son Jesus' name. Lord, ask that you bless each household in the sound of my voice right now. Lord, we ask that you come in to be your chief facilitator as me, and it's not to lean on our understanding, but look to you forgotten in all decisions that we make. And even if we disagree, Lord, let us do respect for one another and love for one another. We ask that you bless this county and let us do what's in the best interest of this county. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for Hampton County Council June sixteenth, twenty twenty five meeting. There is one change that need to be made. Item number five point two will be removed off of the agenda for this evening. Item five point two. With that being said, I don't know of any other changes that need to be made, or any additions, or any other deletions. So what is the approval of council?
Mr. Chair, a motion that we approve, June sixteenth, County Council meeting with the proper correction. Second.
A motion has been made, has been properly second. Any further discussion, comments? If none, all those who are approval of the agenda for Hampton County Council meeting, June sixteenth, twenty twenty five, show your approval by raising your right hand. Anyone opposed? Anyone staying? We're now on item number four, approval of minutes. Four point one, meeting minutes from June second, twenty twenty five Hampton County Council meeting.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minute on June second, two thousand twenty five Hampton County Council meeting.
Second.
A motion has been made, has been properly second. Any comments, any questions, any discussions? If none, all those who are approval of the meeting minutes for June second, twenty twenty five Hampton County Council meeting, show your approval by raising your right hand. Anyone opposed? Anyone staying? Item four point two, minutes from June ninth, twenty twenty five Hampton County Council budget meeting. Where's the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to June budget meeting.
Second. A motion has been made, and has been properly second. Any question, any comments, any discussion? If none, all those who are approval of the meeting minutes from June ninth, twenty twenty five Hampton County Council budget meeting, show your approval by raising your right hand. Anyone opposed? Anyone staying? We're now on item number five, presentations. Five point one, we have a presentation by Dr. Faith L. Popey, if I pronounced that correctly, with BJ H. C.H.S., CEO.
Yeah, good evening everyone. Thank you, and it's okay. It does look like Popey. My husband's family's from Louisiana, so they say Popeye.
Popeye.
Yeah, it's just okay. It's okay. But just in case, just so y'all know, I'm not from Hoffs, okay? I am from Charleston, South Carolina, originally, been living in Buc- for twenty years. But I have two ties to Hampton Cam. One is Ms. Myrtle Sumter. I grew up calling her Aunt Mer. Her sister, Ms. Edwina, is my mother's best friend, so that's my people, right? Then, Mr. Adam Major, who recently passed also, I babysat his granddaughter, okay? So we go back. And so, but I've been here, I wanted to come and talk to you all about Buc- for Jasper Hampton Cam. Hell, you all may have remembered Mr. Roland Gardner, who was our CEO for forty-two years. We have been here in Hampton County since nineteen ninety-nine, but I wanted to give you a little update, because we are expanding a little bit, and I wanted to make sure you all knew all the services we have. I do have with me Mrs. Keisha Austin, who is our executive assistant, and then Ms. Melissa Major, who is our chief of financial office. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit more about us. Right there. Okay, we'll do it. All right, so just a little bit of our mission, right? To provide quality, affordable, accessible comprehensive care. Cam Health is in our, comprehensive health is in our name, and that's what we strive to do. To not only just be another doctor's office, right, but to provide a comprehensive healthcare system. So, a little bit about us. We are what's called a federally qualified community health center. That means that the federal government gives us certain requirements that we must meet in order to continue to be funded by the federal government. We only get about twenty-five percent of our budget, though, from the federal government. In exchange for that, we have certain program requirements. So we must have a sliding fee scale. So all of our patients who are uninsured, we must discount their fees up to two hundred percent of them. So for a family of four, last year, for the federal poverty level, if you makes a little bit under sixty-two thousand dollars, we're able to discount the rates down to a nominal fee, thirty dollars, depending upon what your income level is, and then it goes up. The other thing about us is that we have to have a board of directors as a non-profit organization that is fifty-one percent patients. So patients are on our board. Two patients you may know, so Ms., not patients, but two board members that are represented from Hampton County. Ms. Audrey Hopkins-Williams is on our board, and then also Mr. Daniel Anderson is on our board. So we try to make sure we have a representative board from all the counties, also ensure that the board looks like our patients. So fifty percent of our patients are African-American, about twenty-five percent Hispanic or Latino, twenty-five percent. So we try to make sure we have a good diverse board. And then the other requirements are that we have to have primary care services, so a whole plethora of services, which I'll show you. So, we have been serving the Low Country since nineteen seventy. We have eleven center locations. Just added a recent location in Barnville, so you all may know it as the Harrison Peoples Medical Center. They recently, the Buford Memorial Hospital used to run Harrison Peoples, and they decided that they wanted to leave Hampton Cam. And so we were contacted and partnered with the Low Country Rural Health Education Consortium to fill that gap and to ensure that people continue to have medical care. So everybody who was working at Harrison Peoples would offer to be able to come and work with us. And we recently, I'll get into it a little bit more, but reopened the site there, so I'll talk about that more. We do have ten school-based health center locations. I'll show exactly what schools we serve, three mobile units. And then all the services you see there, adult pediatric, OB-GYN care, dental services, have five pharmacy locations, and then do x-rays, mammography, ultrasound, nutrition, mental health counseling. We take care of farm workers, take care of people living with HIV and AIDS, and people with opioid use disorder. That's what that medication-assisted therapy is, and then do telehealth services. So these are the three sites in Hampton County, so the two that have been there since in late nineties, early two thousands, so Hampton Medical Center, two blocks up the way, and then Estel Medical Center, and then now Barnville Medical Center, that was named for Harrison Peoples. So, at Hampton, currently, we provide adult medicine and then OB-GYN care, and then Estel Adult Medicine and Dental Care. So we have dental chairs there. And then at Barnville is adult pediatrics, continuing those services, but hoping to have more to come, because as I talked about, the comprehensive nature, we want to make sure we are able to have a hub that is comprehensive. So eventually, actually, in July, we, with our five pharmacies, we're going to ensure that we have delivery of medications to the location, expand OB-GYN services, because we know that's something that is needed here in the county, and then nutrition and behavioral health on site. We also are in the school, so ten permanent sites where we actually have medical and dental in the schools. Most of those are in Buford and Jasper County. However, our mobile unit goes to, and those are two mobile units, goes to all these schools. So in Hampton County, and we've been serving those schools for a while, when it was Hampton one and two. But now, we serve all the schools. I think we did Hampton two before, but we serve all the schools now. So we'll go there. Our mobile unit has medical and dental, and if kids are in need of medical care, we'll provide some help. Just a little bit about us. This is, you know, transparency in that you can see, you can look this up online, as a federally qualified health center. Our budget is thirty-seven million dollars. We have staff of more than three hundred employees. And then last year, we saw eighteen thousand patients for sixty thousand patient visits. In Hampton County, we saw almost three thousand patients in twenty twenty-four. Because of our expansion with Barnville, we've already seen twenty-five hundred people, and these are patients, not visits, like individual people that we've seen in Hampton County. And my staff knows that, you know, we've been in Buford and Jasper for a while, but Hampton County is where we want to ensure that we're serving as much as we can, to ensure that all the services that are needed, that all the healthcare that is needed, that we help keep the health, keep the county healthy. This is a little demographics, just so you see kind of the breakdown. About twenty percent of our patients were children. The rest were adults with about twenty-five percent over the age of sixty-five. That may change a little bit as we bring on Barnville, it may shift a little bit in the coming years. By gender, we tend to serve more females than males. Now, I'm a pediatrician. I didn't tell you all that. So my, I came here to practice pediatrics and have been here the twenty-two years. And so up until the age of eighteen, we see girls and boys at the same time. Then at eighteen, it just drops off. We don't see as many men. I'd like to change that, where we have more men coming in. So we'll see. We're going to try to shift those numbers, so. And then this shows our different payment, I guess, payer mix. So about twenty percent of the patients are self-paying, and this is specifically for Hampton County. Overall, if I include Buford and Jasper County, about a third of our patients are self-paid or uninsured. Jasper County, the percentage is less. And then everything else, Medicare, Medicaid, commercial insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we take all of it. A little bit about just economics. So our health center, we have this, they do this study every year. We saved Medicaid eleven million dollars. So just by practicing the way we practice. Actually, all health centers in the state tend to operate very efficiently compared to some other healthcare organizations. A few trends that I've seen, we saw more children last year without insurance, which is troubling to me, because I'm trying to figure out what's going on. Is it that they're losing their insurance, are there more insur, the kids without insurance? We're trying to, and also a lot more kids decrease their Medicaid coverage, and we've seen some shifts there. However, we have more adults with insurance last year. So more people, more adult people are getting insurance. We'll kind of watch those trends this year. Some of our accomplishments is just that we provide these comprehensive services. We do provide transportation, so all of our sites will go pick people up at their house and bring them to get medical care. And then we just do, we try to provide the best quality care. So people with diabetes, we have reduced the number of people with uncontrolled diabetes, and then other people with stable blood pressures, we have some of the highest rates of breast cancer screening, and then other screenings, colon cancer, child immunizations, dental seal, that's for children. And some of things we're working on, maternal infant health is definitely going to be a focus, so trying to get more maternal care, dental care, and then mental health. Since COVID, we've seen a huge increase in the number of anxiety disorders and also depression. And that includes some other information, so you have it, just so you'd see what, where other sites are, other center locations are, and then it goes through each of the sites and says, shows you what's located there. Two of our larger sites, one we call Chelsea, which is in Okati, has pretty much every service that we have, that we offer. And then also in Port Royal Medical Center, a similar thing, where we have all the services that we have. But at that point, I will just see if there are any questions or?
Any questions for the doctor?
Okay. I have a comment for Dr. Popeye. A little caveat to your presentation.
Yes, sir.
And I can speak from experience. For about two years, I struggled with A1C problem off the charts. I've tried to get that down and dealt with some, we say high-power doctors, know-it-all doctors on diabetes, and I could get it under control. My wife and I sat down one day and I said, let's try this. I ended up going to your Sheldon Clinic. I won't call the doctors names, but within about six months, they cut my A1C in half. And since that time, I've been going there ever since. It's about four years now. And there's been a change in your doctors, because you rotated with it, tired, but since day one, I can now drink Coke. So, just the caveat to let them know from personal experience, it works. They're doing a fine job, and I won't go to another doctor. My wife goes there now, and all the grandkids, so great job. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We try to do our best, you know, and our mission, as you saw, really is to improve the health of our people. Like that is our senior mission. That's why we were started. So I appreciate it.
Another question?
You mentioned Miss Sumter was your last, Miss Sumter.
Miss Sumter. Miss Sumter, I was just saying, I know Miss Sumter. Oh, grew up with Miss Sumter.
How was her last pass?
I remember. I remember, because I was trying to figure out, yeah, I knew you. That's it. That's right.
You look familiar, and that's my number two. You had a good, great presentation, great job you got to do.
And what I'm trying to do is give y'all regular, at least any. If you need to come back more, I'm happy to do that. But just to give you progress on what we're trying to do.
So, okay, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
I will get in contact with you. I think, let's try to do something, we can do a free screening for men in Hampton Cam.
Okay, let's do it.
Let's try it.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. Absolutely. Thank you.
We're now on item number six, public hearing. Six point one, this year, twenty twenty-six budget. We now open the floor for public hearing for this year, twenty twenty-six budget.
I don't know if you want me to speak to this presentation now or later, in further understanding.
Well, I think you want to speak to it later, right?
Yes, sir.
So just kind of just give a brief overview, so that the public can, maybe someone in the public, after they hear your overview, they may ask some questions.
Sure. So good evening, everybody. Happy Father's Day, right? Counsel, I didn't see you last week, you traveled, but happy Father's Day. This is the third meeting of our budget, and this presentation reflects some context that you need further information on. We can hit some of the hot notes, but for public purposes, this is a strategic budget framework navigating Hampton County forward financially. Some of those priorities around fiscal responsibility, strategic investment, economic development, operational efficiencies, and trans. What does that relate to this budget? At the bottom, you see fiscal responsibility, that's managing our debt, right? Which is a big issue in the county. Really prioritizing how we pay our debt down, strategic investments, aligning council, your priorities with the vision of this county moving forward. Economic development, development partnerships in places that you haven't had partnerships at, working with our local folks to really build out some of the things that we hope to accomplish in this county. Operational efficiencies. Since I've been in the county for a year, I get tons of calls about our customer service. This budget reflects us starting to put some teeth in how we demonstrate customer service in the county, raising the bar of excellence and expectation, and delivering some things in addition to, you know, the budget and educational piece. In a general sense, these are the priorities, these are the goals that you highlighted at two different retreats, my first year coming in and a few months ago. Fiscal stability, operational excellence, leadership, community engagement, and economic development. The millet's aspect, there were tons of questions around the millet's. We're making some changes, we're proposing to make some changes. This chart reflects the chart in your packets. This is a few key notes, the two-dollar pay increase is effective, would be effective January first of next year. We're eliminating the fiscal financial recovery remaining account in the capital plan reserve, and we can go in more detail of what that looks like, how that sets us up to pay our debt back a little bit faster. We moved bills from fire capital reserve to fire district to be more efficient. Just a few, a few key pieces, the general fund, there was an increase to the general fund for about thirteen million, to, actually, a million dollar, million dollar increase to the general fund. That's associated with the millet's increase. The total millet's increase is associated about two sixty-point-three eight millet's generated approximately fifteen million to increase it about a difference of eight hundred and some thousand dollars. Let's see. And I'll hit some of these other points later in the presentation. Probably this one, the impacts of the change, right? Realigning the millet's ensures stability, adequate funding, and county operation. For an example, we've had a financial recovery slash capital plan reserve millet's calculation. How can you save money and save you in debt? You can't do the contradictory, the contradictory one. So we, we have a capital plan reserve, we can prepare, better manage our dollars to prepare those, fix those spaces in the county that's been ailing. While we're saving dollars to pay our debt to move forward, we captured some lookback. Of that lookback, we've only captured about one point five eight points. And we had a bank of about thirty, thirty points, but by re-calibrate, re-calibrate those funds inside the budget, we were able to reduce the burden on our taxpayers in terms of increasing millet's. Other pieces, we took a tax bill for our taxpayers to see exactly what this means to them, for them. I don't know, Ms. Williams, you want to speak to this great work you did?
No, um, no.
Maybe she'll speak to it later. But yeah, she did a great job. She took a tax bill to be able to show you exactly what this impacts to our taxpayers, right? And just at a very high level, the changes, the county operation fund, that means an increase of about ninety-four dollars, but a reduction in the capital reserve of about forty-one dollars. The debt service fund stays the same, the fire districts about fifteen dollars and thirty-two cent. The fire reserve is a reduction of about three dollars and twenty-seven cent. Fire bond stays the same. And a total obligation of about a hundred and twelve dollars, percent of three cents. We want you guys to understand what that means to our citizens, and also the citizens to understand how that impacts their bills. My mom is always reviewing her bills here in the county, and she makes it very clear she doesn't want her taxes going up. This is the two-dollar analysis that we proposed to the county. Since I've been in the county, I've had some challenges in hiring. Why are we making this change? You know, I think it's today that fifty-two percent of our employees operate in poverty, meaning their take-home salary is below the poverty line. So this is a step forward in trying to address the pay disparities in the county. But there's also another caveat to this. We are implementing performance evaluations inside our policy, meaning raising the bar of service delivery in the county. And we will have routine performance evaluations of all employees to demonstrate how we move forward in the county. And we can get more detail about that a little later. But in a nutshell, the approved budget from last year around eighteen million, this year's request is about twenty-one million, with a difference of about two, two-point-eight million. And some of the strategic priorities are, we moved the risk management, we relocated our assurances. We have some pretty significant IT projects. We prioritize sheriff's office, we prioritize county security, and EMS dispatch to get them what they need to provide the valuable services to our citizens as they should. This is in your package, this is a broad overview. Kind of just showing you the revenue versus expenditures on this chart. But as you can see, our taxes are the meat of the revenue coming into the count. And that's one of the priorities, you know, we've already started sitting with those key offices that supports the tax collection in this county to make sure we're providing the efficient processes and procedures to our citizens. This is a look at the expenditures. It kind of breaks it out in terms of the expenditures. Public safety, we're talking about forty, forty percent of the expenditures, general government funds, a general government obligation about twenty-nine percent, public works about fourteen percent, and the other numbers you can see, but we can, again, we can talk about that a little later. And I have a closing statement to support the budget requests, as you see. But I'll come back later in the presentation, we can talk more, talk more into the more details about some of the context of this presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for that overview. The floor is open to the public for public hearing on the this year, twenty twenty-six budget. If none, allow close this decision of this year, twenty twenty-six budget. Six point two, to authorize a tax anticipation note in the mind of not to exceed one million, eight hundred thousand dollars, and other matters being mentioned. Allow open the floor for this public hearing.
Again, we're not quite out of the tan business yet. This is a reduction in previous year's tans. Last year's tan was about three million, this year's tan request is about one point eight million. And what that does is that covers us in the dry months when our taxes have dried up and we are making adjustments. But this budget reflects a reduction in the tan, but also, this budget also reflects us balancing our invoices to get to a ninety-day turnaround to paying our invoices, worst-case scenario, versus, you know, a hundred and twenty, you know, months before pays some of our invoices. So trending in the right direction to pay our bills on time, more efficiently, more effectively. But that's, that's the reason for.
Thank you, Mr. Young. The floor is open for the public.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, you come, you come to the podium. And please state your name and where you're from.
Sure. Mary Benton, I'm from Brunson, and I just have a question for clarification, because I'm not a high-finance person. You know, I'm like into hundred eighty dollars plus more, one point eight million. But I noticed the sources of revenue, there was a one point eight million dollars listed. there was a one point eight million dollars listed. So is that in fact the tan that you're listing as resources? You know, you have like, I think it's the alcohol on taxes, uh fees, um yada yada. A couple lists?
Yes, sir.
And there is an item that exactly matches this one point eight million. So I guess I'm just confused. Is this part of the expected revenue we're borrowing? I don't know, I'm confused.
So the county's been taking tans for the past eight years.
I understand that.
That's been part of the culture of us moving forward financially. We're just putting it inside a budget, putting numbers where they should be and and demonstrate to the public in transparency. But yes, that those funds are uh calculated as part of supporting the budget and executing our priorities.
So I I understand, and again, I'm dealing with a hundred eighty dollars. I understand like the alcohol on taxes, uh but this you're gonna have to pay back. You're not gonna have to pay back me, the taxpayer, the alcohol on tax, whatever else, fees, whatever else. There was four or five things, and I'm not real versed in that either, but this you're gonna have to pay back. So how do you? I I just don't understand.
So.
In layman's terms.
Yeah, I got you. I have this conversation with my mom all the time.
Okay, got you.
Mom, here we go, mom. Tax season, tax season hits about January, right? Money's coming in, about January, February, and March, we get we get it to rims right around here, right? So we pay our bills the best way we can up until the next fiscal season rolls around. The county has been borrowing tans for about seven to eight years right now. And so what that does, that covers us in the dry season. Tans are basically loans from banks, right? To cover our center dry season. We've paid back those tans on time every year for the past seven years. And we paid back the loan from last year of three million. We paid it back two months in advance, right? So what that says is that we don't need three million. That means we're trending as a county in the right direction. So just on the safe side, as a precaution, we felt the numbers kind of added up to about one point eight to engage banks to put on RFP to see if they'll work with us. Because we still gotta put an RFP out to identify if a bank would actually give us that loan, right? So yes, we are responsible for paying that paying that back. It's kind of a payday.
That's not a good thing, son.
Pay you pay you pay it, you give it to me upfront and I'll circle back and pay it back later. There's a lot of interest attached to that, but um.
I was just gonna ask you that. What is the interest rate?
Well, last year's loan was right at about nine nine point eight percent. We're hoping that that interest rate comes down a little bit better this year, demonstrating, based on the demonstration of the county trending in a better direction. Those are all valid and critical questions.
So those are numbers that one point eight K does represent the tan, the tax and participation.
Thank you, mommy.
Any other um comments from the public in this public hearing? If none, I now close the public hearing for the uh the authorization of a tax anticipation note in the amount of eighteen of one point eight million dollars. And other matters we leave in here too. We're now on item number seven, um public comments.
No public comments.
Any comments at this time? Item number eight, appointments. We have new appointments at this time. Item number nine, approval of items requiring council action. On item point one, the project grant application on the airport of this year twenty twenty five.
Good evening, counsel. Christopher and Lacy, Deputy Cunningham. I was just gonna grab the map. As you may remember, when I presented the capital improvement plan for the airport, we are laser focused on getting the airport runway lit. So that's about a two year project and there's several prerequisites that have to be done and we're working on those today uh with the ultimate goal of getting the runway lit. So tonight, we're requesting approval to submit a grant request to the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission, which is a ninety ten, a ninety percent, ten percent grant. And it's a hundred thousand dollar project and it will bring in a beacon. You can see on our master plan, the beacon is proposed right here. So the beacon is generally in that area and we've been working with our consultant and engineer to identify the most efficient spot for it. Um it's a monopole, it's very sort of modern, it's attractive, uh it actually has a tilt feature which will make maintenance and um uh replacing light bulbs a lot cheaper and easier and faster. Of course, it's LED light bulbs, so it's expected to last a long time. So this is super, super exciting and a huge step in the right direction. We have to do this to get the runway lit. This is one of those prerequisites. Um just for note, we are contemporaneously working on some clearing some obstruction areas here, which is also a prerequisite to lighting the runway. But the beacon is ready to go. The good news is um the ten percent match is coming from available USD loan funds that were left over from the hangar project. So this is zero taxpayer dollars, zero general fund impact and a hundred percent funded um by the airport. And so we're super excited and look forward. We have a deadline coming up for their July meeting. And uh we expect to submit and then be approved at their forty second meeting and installation will occur this fall. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, would you repeat where you said the the matching fund would come from again?
So the uh we uh the county borrowed money from the USDA rural rural development fund to build the hangars. And there's about two hundred seventy thousand dollars left over from that. And uh this was part of uh previous presentations. Um that money is earmarked for airport improvements. And in a memorandum, um I basically said this is our earmark for grant matching funds in addition to other capital improvements to the airport that are that don't have any uh grant funds available to it. Um so for example, like the hangars are revenue generators and the fuel station is a revenue generator. So the state aeronautics grants would not fund any maintenance to those or any improvements to them because they're revenue revenue generators, but they will fund anything to do with safety and security such as lights and beacons and fencing and cameras and things like that. So um so those that two hundred seventy thousand dollars is gonna go a long way. And it's my expectation that that will be the matching fund for the lighting project itself. So we can get through the beacon project, we can get through the obstruction removals, we can get through um a a new fuel pump purchase. All of that can be done outside of general fund with these funds that are available from the loan, which we're already paying principal interest on out of the airport budget uh through the revenue from the fuel sales and the hangar that. And um so that is, those loan monies are earmarked for those future improvements. And we'll get through, we should be able to get through the lighting project without any impact on general fund. We'll come into council for that. So that two points, that two hundred seventy thousand, say we use about two hundred fifty thousand of that as matching funds for grants, that's two and a half million dollars in grant projects that we can fund with those left over funds. So that's the expectation is primarily using it for the for the batch.
Want the uh obstruction removal?
Yes, sir.
Uh that include trees?
Yes.
Uh will will you go make sure when you do that, if you cut it, the trees don't have a problem that you cut the trees as well as grinding stuffs?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We will look at the grass, some grinding, and we will um we're actually looking at updating the forms that go along with that, uh to make sure the property owners are fully informed of what's happening. We get permission from them as well. And then the interesting thing is we're uh already meeting with the nation because the most complicated part of that is there's three light bulbs that have been identified as obstructed in the approach to the runway. And so we have to go through and work with them to figure out what's the best solution, whether it's whether it's we can just lower those lights or whether we have to bury them. So we don't know the cost of all that, but this match, we should be able to fund a lot of that with the grants and using this money as as the match as well. So hopefully get through, the plan is to get through the get through the beacon project, contemporaneously work on the obstruction removals. And that will lay the table for us, that will set the table for us to light the airport runway.
So so one of the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
At one point, the chairman, Franklin Ferguson, had offered to come in and help with instruction obstruction removal. Is he still a part of it?
He's our chairman and he's very willing and able to help anyway he can.
With his equipment?
Sure.
So you're not exactly sure how much of this is gonna be matching funds for?
Oh, uh the beacon project is uh ninety seven hundred um fifty dollars, I think, is in your package right now. But it's less than ten thousand dollars.
So okay, our match is less than ten thousand.
It's a hundred thousand dollar, well, it's a ninety seven thousand dollar project. Less than ten thousand is our matching outcome. It's not in our budget because it's USDA holding that money, so we just submit a request to draw it down and then uh we'll get reimbursed. We have enough cash flow. I saw a report today that we had like four hundred twenty thousand dollars of cash in the airport um account, so we can cash flow the project no problem. We can pay our bills no problem and we can submit for reimbursement, so it will be ninety percent. Actually, we'll be a hundred percent of what they have in the project. Super exciting. Everybody's pumped for the airport. This is this is a project that saves lives. I think everybody on this board knows this, but it's good for the public to hear this. The lighting runway is gonna save lives. And I get goosebumps thinking about, and I don't have to go into the stories, but we all know that we've lost lives in Hampton County because the airport's not lit. And so we're we're working, that is our laser focus, so we'll get that airport lit.
Other questions? So you you heard the um report from our deputy administrator? What is the pleasure of counsel?
Sheriff, I make the motion that uh we approve the project grant application available.
Motion has been made at the coffee set. Any questions, any comments, any discussion? If none, all those who are approval of the project grant application, airport fiscal year twenty twenty five, show your approval by reaching right hand. Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining? Item number ten, I ask for discussion. We have none at this time. Resolutions, proclamation. Eleven point one, elevating our fatherhood month. Dr. Lawrence Ford.
Yes, thank you, counsel. I'm Lawrence Ford from the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families. And I have with me today Mr. Curtis Hopkins. Mr. Hopkins is a a manager in our Low Country Outreach Areas where we serve fathers and families. And I have someone, some of you may know, Dr. Travian Capers, if they would come up. Dr. Capers is on our Board of Directors uh at in our Columbia headquarters. Just real briefly, and I don't want to take a a lot of time because you have important council business, but this month is is our elevate fatherhood month in the entire state. South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families, as you've seen from our uh twenty twenty four impact report. We serve all forty six counties for the past twenty five years. And we do that with programs and services in connecting dads to their children. And that's the the bottom line. We have a mission statement essentially is we provide the resources for fathers to become great dads. And this is great because it's the day after Father's Day. I'm sure most of us have kids and maybe grandkids. I've got six grandkids. But the the reality is that there are there are dads in our state, estimated forty to fifty thousand dads in our state who are still disconnected from their kids. And what we do is we provide free educational programming for parenting, for healthy relationships, for economic mobility. We have a jobs training program. I mean, we offer services that help dads get a job uh or get a better job, as well as to navigate um some uh legal issues that they may face with Department of Social Services and family court. So we have seventeen offices around the state. But we serve all forty six counties and we do that by um having our affiliate partners in each in five regions of the state um go out to each county monthly or quarterly, but they attend court side by side with the dad and they provide services to help that dad navigate court, navigate child support, custody, visitation, paternity, and all of these areas where they have a need to connect with their job. I'm gonna ask Dr. Capers to speak. He's a relatively new board member. He's known here and if he could just talk about his experience with our.
Good evening, Chris, how are you all? Again, I am, I would need much of an introduction, native South Carolina graduate of Weyman High School, class of nineteen ninety eight, my parents live in Santa Bridge. Uh but currently professionally, I serve as a director of assessment and quality improvement for the University of South Carolina School of Medicine. So uh an opportunity to serve with partnerships such as this, the Elevate Fathers, some of you all know my story, I became a father before I became a man and had those struggles that many people face and through the recommendation from a colleague of mine, Freddie Clairville, whose name led Watchbox fifty seven, I came to know the work of the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families. For about a calendar year now, I've served on the executive board and I've seen full uh full tilt, the work that they do and the impact that they make. Child custody hearings empower fatherhood at events such as what we just recently had in Beaker. What's on uh task at Orangeburg and my role is just to help bring awareness and uh and support to what the staff and Dr. Ford and the executive director during efforts are doing. It is a noble task that is understated. I don't think that fathers can take a share of their children if they're incarcerated or have not the skills they need to be able to find suitable employment to pay child support. That comes through education, that comes through other mechanisms that our center helps champion. So we appreciate any recognition the county would offer and any support that you might be willing to guard and to help undergird our efforts. So I want to thank you for your time. It's good seeing all of you, but uh want to thank you so much for your time.
We do have a proclamation that we want to read.
Yes, sir, thank you.
After I read the proclamation, I ask that uh all the council and through our county administrator uh if you will join me and uh upfront to take a picture.
Thank you.
Proclamation. But I'll read the proclamation and it says, Hattie County proclamation, elevating fatherhood month. Whereas fathers represent the foundation, foundational element of resilient families providing love, guidance and support to their children. And whereas the significant influence of fathers on their children's development is profound as they impart values, encourage personal growth and nurture resilience. And whereas the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families, established in two thousand and two, has emerged as a chemical source of support, equipped tens of thousands of fathers throughout our state with essential resources and knowledge to fulfill their responsibilities and fatherhood. And whereas the longstanding collaboration between the center and the South Carolina Department of Social Services alongside other state, local and private entities has facilitated the center's expansion into all forty six counties and the enhancement of innovative programs designed to better serve a greater number of fathers. And whereas the center has successfully supported, developed and brought its father three sixty five statewide network or regional fatherhood organizations that directly impact thousands of fathers and families every year. And whereas when fathers take an active role in leading and engaging with their children, these young individuals thrive in social, emotional and academic domain domains. And whereas the center continually to exemplify a model for fatherhood initiatives on a national level. And whereas the month of June presents an opportunity for all citizens of our county to celebrate and honor the essence of fatherhood, acknowledging the unwavering efforts of fathers in shaping the future of our communities. And now therefore, we, the county council for Hattie County, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of June twenty twenty five as elevate fatherhood month throughout the county and encourage all citizens in Hattie County, South Carolina to express their gratitude for the fathers in their lives. This initiative aims to celebrate the significant contributions of fathers and to promote their active involvement in the lives of their children. This initiative aims to celebrate the significant contributions of fathers and to promote their active involvement in the lives of their children. Such involvement is essential for enhancing the well-being of young individuals, cultivating responsible citizens. And strengthening families and communities across our county. Signed by Hampton County Council, Rory Hollingsworth, Chairman, Darren Williams, Vice Chairman, Jordan J.J. Jinks, Member, Dennis Thompson, Junior, Member, Marvin J. Love, Member. And also our current council, our chief of all. So it is council and rejoining, including our community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. There we go. We got it. We got really quiet in here.
My cheek got kinda slow. Not a very good photographer.
I already got, I already got the picture.
We're now on item number twelve of ordinances, item twelve point one, third reading of ordinance. On A, third reading of an ordinance to authorize the tax participation note and amount of not to exceed one million eight hundred thousand dollars and other matters already there too. Um, our county administrator has already shared with us, um, this, uh, particular item. Uh, if there's anything else anybody wanna say at this time, uh, before I ask, what's the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve twelve point one, third reading of ordinance. Uh, third reading of orders to authorize tax participation note for the amount of not to exceed one point eight million.
A motion has been made and has been properly settled. Um, any lasting comments, questions, discussion? If none, all those who are approval of this third reading, show your approval by, uh, raising your right hand. Anyone on phones, anyone up standing? We're now on item twelve point one B, third reading of an ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty six.
Council, I think it's only fair that this Williams takes a moment to kind of walk you through the context associated with the hard work to, to draft a tax bill. So our residents can understand what the implications are through the changes and, and walk you through, uh, this a few numbers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Latony Wilson, the county auditor, just for anybody who didn't know. And, um, these lovely bills I put together are the bills that come out, um, when you get your vehicle notices, also your real estate notices that come out in November. And, um, I tried to, they're color coded so that things kind of pop out at you. Things that you wanna pay attention to on your bill, if you ever see anything on your bill that maybe shouldn't be there, you're always able to give us a call. And, um, we'll go over your bill with you, tell you what everything is. So, um, on this particular bill here, the sample is from a property, a land that was appraised at twenty thousand dollars and the building being appraised at a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. And this is actually a home that's being valued at four percent, which is legal residence. So this sample gives us what a typical bill would look like for someone whose home was in that value. And, um, up in the top where the county tax distribution is. We have our county operations, which for twenty twenty five was two oh nine point five. And, um, the increase on that was to two twenty three point four. Capital plan reserve, which will go from ten point two down to four. Cause we did, like, um, the administrator previously stated, we did reallocate a lot of the funds. We didn't take everything that we could have taken from the lookback millage that we had from the CPI. But we did take a small amount and we also redistributed the majority of it. So the ten point two in the capital reserve will go down to four. Debt service will, um, remain at eight. Trying to, um, get a handle on the debt. And also the fire district will increase from twenty two thirteen. Now this sample had, the numbers on this sample are what we could have taken for the CPI. So they may be different from the previous slide, so I just wanted to point that out now, um. So from what we could have had, but also the fire bond is one mill. The Hampton County School District, which plans to increase the millage to two five zero point fifty three. And also the school bond that we have will remain at forty four mill, giving us a total millage of five fifty five point ninety one mill. Which gives us a difference in the bill of a hundred and twelve dollars and seventy three cents, which, which I pointed out that the land appraisal and the building appraisal of a building that's a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars with a total of a hundred and sixty eight thousand seven hundred total. Um, appraisal, which gives us an assessment of sixty seven fifty. And then the assessment is how we determine the taxes. So that's why you would see that, um, assessment on your bill. So your appraisal by the ratio gives you your assessment, and then we take the assessment and multiply it by the millage, and that's how we come up with the tax. So, um, if you go down on this bill, you'll see where this homeowner actually applied for a homestead exemption, which is in the state of South Carolina, if you are over the age, over the age of sixty five, and I say over the age of sixty five. Because it doesn't start when you turn sixty five, it starts when you turn sixty six, because the taxes are a year behind. So basically, everything that happens during that year is applied to the following tax year. So this taxpayer happens to have a, a, a homestead exemption, which gets a deduction from his bill of six hundred and ten dollars and seventy six cents. Now, the homestead exemption is only fifty thousand dollars. So depending on the value of your home. It can either be all of it, if your home is valued at under fifty thousand, or a part of it, like this bill is. So that's why you'll see a lot of people with a bill that says zero taxes due, is because their property value is lower than what we're allowed to take for homestead exemption. And then that, uh, that's also based upon whose name the house is in and different factors. So we, the cap is fifty thousand on a homestead exemption. So in this case, they are getting a full fifty thousand dollar exemption, which gives them six hundred and ten dollars and seventy six less on their bill. They are also taking advantage of the legal resident exemption, which is basically the amount of the school taxes are removed from the bill.
I said like three eighty.
Yeah, and that, um, with a lost credit, and I only estimated the lost credit on here because we are gonna, um, reconfigure the lost credit. We have to adjust it every year. So, and that gives them a total bill of one thousand two hundred thirty two dollars and fourteen cents. And as long as they pay this bill before January fifteenth, that's what they're paying. Now, um, the administrator also brought up the dry periods for the county. So we, we usually get an up sixty collection around September. Because we're getting ready to put the delinquent taxes in paper. Nobody wants their names in paper. So, and you know, and usually after summer vacation, people focus more on paying the taxes. So we're usually slow, um, after the taxes become delinquent, which is March seventeenth. Through pretty much the whole summer, and we start to see an increase again in September. So that's like our dry period, where we don't collect as much taxes as we, we could because of, um, this is the time of year. But vehicle taxes are every month, but more than likely, most of our revenue comes in before March the seventeenth. And then we'll, we'll have the, um, the taxes normally come out in November, as long as they're on time, they'll come out in November. And, um, they're collected up until January fifteenth, when they become late. They don't become delinquent until March the seventeenth. Any question?
I have another question.
Yeah.
What is the difference on regular taxes and if I put my property on ag?
Well.
How do you generate that percentage?
Agriculture is also taxed at four percent ratio. So normally, if it's just for your property, it's six percent. But if you claim it as agriculture, then it's down to four percent ratio. So like I said before, that appraised value is, we, we multiply that by that ratio, and that's how we get the assessment. So at a six percent, that is, that assessment would be a lot higher. At six percent. And even though it's only two percent difference, it's a big difference when it comes to your taxes.
Now, this might be an outside question, but what determines that I'm truly bringing you my con, my property as ag? What, 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 what's a little finer?
Well, you have to, it has to be farm land. And you know, you have to meet certain criteria in order to say, you, you can't just say your property with your home is ag. We know that's not possible. They probably would take out like one acre to put your home on, and the rest will be agriculture. But the difference is the four hundred and sixty percent. Either it's a commercial lot, a rental lot, or it's your residential lot, or it's agriculture.
But we don't monitor throughout the county.
Yeah, we have assessors. Well, we don't have assessors right now, but we have an assessors office. And when you come in and apply for ag, they do, do their research in order to say, well, yes, you're approved. You have to go through an approval process also. They don't just give you ag because you're safe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, smooth.
So just to quickly recap, you know, the past few months, we've had budget workshops where we had department heads present their, their needs to the county. Um, in context of, of numbers and in context of, uh, personnel numbers as well. So today was to really drill down on a few pieces that you had questions about in the most recent budget, um, discussion. But the FY budget approved from twenty five was about eighteen billion. This budget is about twenty month, twenty one, where the difference is almost about two point eight billion. Um, but it reflects, it demonstrates us thinking about being efficient with our dollars, preparing to pay our debt back. We're at the tail end of the forensic audit. Um, we're, we're planning and thinking about how we, how we pay back and get prepared to pay back our debt associated with CPTF discussions that were still happening with U R. So we're thinking forward by pouring funds back into the general fund to be able to pay, pay our bills, right? But also prioritizing on key things that need to be fixed in this county, um, soon as we may. But I will pause to see if you have any questions, and I, I'm happy to go back to any, any one of the pages that kind of walk you through any questions that you may have.
You had a discussion previously on each department of being able to fill vacancies. Are we clear on what we do with that?
If you call, if you call your attention to, you should have a hand out there. So we are only looking to fill positions, positions that are currently open.
Correct.
And it hasn't been hired, that's it.
Correct.
The only other positions that, that are new, uh, that are being proposed is with, uh, law enforcement. That, that's making sure the sheriff is able to support the county and it makes it easy. And I think that's a, that's a critical piece for the county. But outside of that, all the other positions are either in the huddle, meaning they haven't been filled. They've been nice for, for months, in years, in some cases. We have some critical hires. We need to hire an assessor in the county. Um, we have a new high finance director, which we are excited about having. He joined the team last week. And I was a finance director for almost, what, sixteen months?
Yeah.
Seventeen months. Um, so, so yes.
Yeah, and my question is, I need, I wanted to be clear and I wanted to be on the right. Is there a discussion with the administrative and financial team with the department heads on what we're going to allow with this budget? We don't need surprises when we pass this budget.
So what we, so what we did, we, we engaged all the department heads as it relates to that budget. They presented to you. After they presented to you, we sat with those budgets that we thought needed some critical conversations. We had those conversations. Uh, we have a few department heads in the room today that they're welcome to come, come and ask, but we were intentional and thoughtful about taking into consideration their needs, but the overall need of the county, we have to have papers. Right? And, and that's a, that's a hard pill to swallow and understand when we operate in a deficit, but we got some huge gaps in terms of personnel, which you guys know. But, um, yes, we, we took the time to present that context to department heads. Um, and maybe, I don't know if Strick, you want, you want to come up and talk about your budget? How you feel about the process? Maybe Mr. Lawson? Maybe Mr. Cam? We have a few department heads. Sheriff is here.
Yes, sir.
How you doing, sir?
Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Chairman, Member of Council, Finance Director, Clerk of Court, listen. Um, just like the county administrator, Mr. Yomis said, we, we met several times on the budget. And I can clearly say that this year, we did everything by the book. And we worked together, and I want to thank him for that. I understand that the county is, is having some financial issues and we understand that. But my primary goal is to make sure that we keep the citizens and the community safe. And some things we can't cut, and Mr. Yomis understands that, and I understand as well. So I just want y'all, uh, to know that I certainly thank you all for everything that you all have done. And Mr. Yomis, the county administrator, on my, as the sheriff, and on my department, I certainly thank you for just sitting at the table, and I cannot leave this young lady here.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you.
I try not to speak after this year. But I, I have to echo what he said, um, and, and just trying to crunch the numbers and look at the need of the sheriff office. It's just been a pleasure this year in the whole process, starting from the beginning, um, and just trying to work with Michelle all the way up through today. And, uh, I told her she can take the rest of the week off. Then when I asked her, just said, Chief said I can take it off. But it's truly been a pleasure, um, just the teamwork effort of how everyone got in. And tried to make this budget happen and take care of the needs of the county. And so we're looking forward to this year. Thank you all. Thank you.
She, she, she takes the rest.
She, if she takes the rest of the week off, make sure that may come down to chapter.
Good evening, everybody. I I find it's hard to believe, and I'm gonna be extremely brief. I must say that this past year, the budget process has been more detailed, more thorough, there's been more feedback and more conversation than I think I've ever experienced, honestly, in my professional career. Um, with this team that has been put together, there've been some difficult conversations, there've been some debates. Some bordering on arguments and pullback to debate, but that's what's necessary for us to make sound good, thoughtful decisions and I've had a few uh things to say inside of my head during some of these conversations, but I do want to express my gratitude to the council, um, to the administrator, to Ms. Gaston, to the department heads that work underneath me. We've met multiple times, there has been tremendous communication that has occurred around the budget, and I hope it is something that a- as a team and as a county, we can continue to move forward in in the years to come. And and duplicate, if there is any way to improve, improve upon what we're doing, but uh we're on the right path as far as searching budgets and numbers and operational needs and and I just, like I said, I want to express my appreciation to y'all and to the administrator, Ms. Gaston. And everybody that helped in the process to get us to where we are, and that's been a long road, and I echo that Ms. Gaston needs to take the rest of the week off. But I don't have it in my budget.
Good afternoon, everyone, um, good evening, Council Chair, Councilman, uh, new finance, Ms. Chanel. I'm glad to see you back, Mr. Yumis. Um, I just want to say, as they said already, the process has been a tremendous learning process for me. Um, I want to find a office, basically my office for Ms. Gaston. Uh, she's been very, very helpful in this process and it has been the most thorough process that I have seen. So I'm grateful for that, I have uh met and talked with Ms. Gaston, Mr. Yumis, we had a meeting. Um, I understand and I appreciate you guys realizing that we do need to be on the eighty-six hours, I am grateful for that. I am also grateful to see that we will be having an increase across the county because it's needed. So I'm just grateful for that part, and I know there'll be further conversations and meetings with Mr. Yumis and Ms. Lewis. But I thank y'all so much for y'all time and your effort and Mr. Yumis, all the hard work that you put in to make this possible, thank y'all so much.
I want to follow up because I asked a question to open that door. But I want to follow up because I talked to every department head throughout the last year, year and a half. Since we had Mr. Yumis on board, I said, give us a minute, we'll get it straightened out. Just want to bring it back to your attention. I knew that he was going to build his team around him to pull us out of where he was. And I want to commend him and the team for what you just said. And he did it without a CFO, he didn't do it with a complete staff in his office. He had a lot of hats he had to wear to make it happen with Ms. Gaston's help. Now he's got a CFO, imagine next year's budget, so let's give him one.
So, you guys haven't approved it yet, but I appreciate it as well. I play sports in high school, college, and I I I don't take a break on, I'm always pushing. But I do sincerely appreciate Ms. Gaston, Ms. Alice. It's 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 remarkable, the small team we have and what we can handle to do. But um, we're we're making sausage, because a lot goes into it, we're not quite ready to sell it. That's all I hope, you gentlemen, see you. Any questions?
So council members, we're at item twelve point B, the third reading of the ordinance for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. Love the pleasure, council.
Mr. Chair, I take pleasure in making a motion that will approve twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget.
Second, my motion has been made, has the property second. Final comments, final um questions, final discussion. If none, all those who are approval of the third reading of the ordinance for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, show your approval, I raise your right hand. Anyone oppose, anyone abstain? We're now on item um twelve point two, second reading of ordinance, we have none of this evening. Out of twelve point three, first reading of the ordinance, we have none this evening. We're now on item number thirteen, uh, council briefing, thirteen point one, county council members' ladies' hour reports update. I will start off by being chairman, I just want to uh thank uh, all of the county employees, ladies who were involved in the Father's Day lunches. I have another e so much. It was a beautiful thing, it was a really beautiful thing and and for those um of 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 the fathers uh who are county employees, uh who attended, I'm sure that they enjoyed it as much as 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 I did. Um, I did not take the tray back home because I didn't know, because I was sitting down. But uh, I just want to say thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart and and uh, I'm sure other council members and other county employees, uh, uh, who are fathers, I feel the same way. Thank you for all that you've done to make this a happen, so again, I want to give you all a hand. You served me so well, I went, I when I went home, I was thinking the same thing, but you didn't. Not like that, you didn't have it like that. But uh, with that being said, that's all that, that's what all the comments that happened made. Um, I will start on my light with councilor um Leavitt, any comments?
Yeah, uh, I like, I like how everything is following in line. You know, and trusting God, things work out, and there was a whole lot of trust this year, putting this budget together. Let's just keep doing what we're doing and keep building more and more. Another event that was helped by some members of our county and its staff, they had a Juneteenth first annual at the Primmum Park. A lot of potential, a lot of potential. There was a lot of vendors that was out there from different places throughout the state. And uh, being that it was the first, you know, gotta get delayed, but future wise, it's gonna be something nice if they continue, it was nice. And um, thanks to our head dealer, the head woman. Yes, sir, sheriff department, that along with the MLK staring committee, they did a great job. I just want to mention that.
I had a chance to uh participate, June sixth fest last week, parade and other events they had and turned out real well. We're just glad to be a part of that. And again, I want to echo what Mr. Holm said at that time. How well we were served on Friday by the ladies. I hope he wasn't going to slam, but he said he didn't take any food home.
And the reason I was able to have something left because uh Captain Jakes was not here. But I do want to say this, I'm serious, no, I do want to say this. You know, when I um, when I ran over this uh office, I ran on a platform of transparency, integrity, and being honest. So when people ask, I appreciate what the administrator and the staff has done, so when people ask you questions, because questions are going to be asked about, you know, whenever you talk about raising taxes. But I feel good about it, not afraid of it, not going to dodge a question because we got numbers to back up what we're doing. And anytime we're trying to take care of our employees and make this county better for everybody, then I don't mind taking those questions. Because I know I can sleep good at night knowing that we're doing what's in the best interest of this county, and that's what we're elected to do. That's all I'm saying.
Council um, council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank the uh Ms. Ms. Yumis and his team for the hard work they put into the budget. And 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 taking some suggestions that the county council and I think he's uh implemented um, those uh suggestions, well, Mr. Gaston and other part of the team, we appreciate them so much, they've done excellent job in doing that. And uh, if we're going, is it, was it necessary to do so many things that we we've uh added budget? My my answer to that question is yes, we need to bring the county back up to uh in twenty-first century when it's going to come down to technology. Come down to our employees, we want to make sure that they feel good, they have to go home, they have to find their families also. And uh, also, but on the economic development side, uh, on last, I served on the uh one of the representatives on council for the whole country regional war commission. And we were supposed to have a dedication of the new uh billion gallon water tank down at the industrial park, but we had to put it off last week and call them up again. So uh, hopefully we'll be having that dedication at another time, I mean, the groundbreaking for that. The work is already being done, I hope, but we just want to officially have that groundbreaking, so that's that's the other portion that will be a a big link to uh to make the industrial park revival and attract appropriately to uh other outside companies that will be coming, that we hope that will be coming to the county. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council um.
First of all, I want to apologize to the ladies of the county candidate, put our father's dick in her arm. But work took precedence, I couldn't be here, I apologize. Now, I have some friends and I see some of them in this audience. I guess you didn't think that Mr. Jakes do eat later, so you let Mr. Love take it off. Mr. Love wasn't thinking about me at all. And I hate, I don't want to come behind these guys with all the great comments, but I do have something that's been questioned. I've been questioned on a couple of times by several people, which is I think we need to pay a little attention to the boards that we have in the county. I believe Mr. Love requested a list of the boards and every member in the past, am I correct?
I did.
Are you, I'll get it working on that for us. And I say that to say this, the five of us sit here ran on a ticket for this office. The people in this county voted the five of us in to be stewards of this county. At the end of the day, this council is going to be responsible for whatever happens and handling the county. So I say, I think the boys need to read, the people of the boys need to read policy and do know, you can't run this county from your seat on the board. You're an advisory committee. We take here, we take here, heed to what you advise us on, we discuss it and make the decision. But a lot of the boards are trying to take over, won't happen. Do you agree with me, gentlemen, that we're responsible for this county? It just needs to be on record. We have to, we have to make a determination of who gets on the board. So how can you tell us what to do? We listen to what you advise us on, because most of the time you know better than us, the department you're in. I don't mean any disrespect, and I won't be disrespectful. So in order to get respect, give respect. Thank you.
What else, back when we said, when it comes to the votes, do we have an update on, I noticed on our website? When I said we updated the votes on our website?
I think we're going to need to, I think, better information, put it up there, that's something I need to check on.
Depends on the board, really.
Depends on the board. I'd have to check on that and get you better information on details of what dates they were updated and when, to be sure, to be certain on there.
So um, so Ms. Orin, you're asking questions of, when you're sending out information about the boards, is just that some of them are just not replying back?
Um, remember I told you I ran an ad for the for the whole month of December? And I really didn't get any feedback from any other boards. The only boards that really keep in contact with me are, you have um Airport Planning Commission, um E D C. You know, they make sure I get everything, but other than that, and low hall.
That would be reflective of the web, the web was on the website as well, the same participation would count, so if it hadn't been updated for a while, there's probably a good reason that we don't have the information, so.
Now, I'm not talking about the application for the vote.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the board, so if they're not responding to you, then why can't the council consider just revamping the vote? Just, just filling the spots, if they're ignoring the fact that they need to contact us so we can know who's on board, because each board should have a chairperson. And if we know who the chairperson is, and the chairperson they collect to give you that information, then the council needs to consider just revamping the board.
We we need to know who's on these boards. Some of these boards were formed before we got here. The score board, I'm sure we find with, we just put it together, go with that. But some of the other boards, I I don't know how many people are, I hear names come through, I get emails on this board, that board. I don't even know who these people are. I have citizens asking me, well, who's running the county? Do the boards run it? No, not gonna happen. So I I, my senior, can you give me some, give her some advice on how we can get that list?
Well, first of all, not all of the boards are active.
Right.
You know, all the boards are like, there's some active boards, and there's some non-active boards. You know, you know, we have some boards that don't have no one in it because uh they've been there active so long, even if they was open, the board members uh that were on there probably had not even for to uh to extend their their time on there, so many of the uh boards that don't have anybody on there, uh people had it up years ago. But um, the score did uh advertise back in December, of one month of December, uh inviting the public, one hundred point, that they want to serve on any of our boards. So the, and so it's, so the invitation is still out there. You know, if they don't have to wait until they actually um um see it advertised in the paper, but any citizen that wants to serve on any of our boards, they can inquire about it and see if there are any openings on it, and then you can go and get it.
Because I I I thank you, because I misunderstood that, I thought we were saying that that there were boards who she was contacting and they were just refusing to contact her back, that that's what I was referring to.
As far as in, I I don't have anybody to contact because I don't know who's on the board, who's not, you know.
Okay, I I got, okay. So if there's, so if any of these boards, we we think as a council that it's essential that they're laying dormant. Um, so you were saying that we are putting out applications or they on the website? Okay, and maybe it will help, not, I'm talking to me personally, if I knew these these boards that's that's open, we might could just um ask some people. Sometimes everybody's not going to see the website, everybody's just not savvy with looking at that information. So I think we can recruit as well, so we can take the initiative to recruit to fill some of these boards with some worthy people in this county.
But if, but in the recruitment, the person who you're trying to recruit, you need to come and apply.
I I understand, but what what I'm saying is we can recruit and then they can go through the process.
Yes.
I get that.
Yes.
But I think we we just need to do better, we can just stop recruiting. If these boards are essential to be built.
Can you give us a list of the boards?
Yeah, and Mr. Holmsworth gave us all the list, I think, back in January, February, but you have to be, you have to be able to um have an email, because a lot of these boards, that's how they get information on by email. So I mean, if you don't know how to fill out an application online, it's really going to be hard to me to serve on a board because you get a lot of the information. Because you get a lot of the information, a lot of, a lot of it by email.
All right, well, when I recruit, I'll make sure that they understand that. Okay, thank you, so we can make sure they understand all that, so we can, again, we can re- recruit as well. Thank you, man.
Thank you, councilman. Okay, we are now on item number fifteen point two, uh county uh attorney's update. Uh, county attorney, uh, you know, had to leave of another obligation, uh. But he did uh leave us with uh some information, um, that he has uh emailed us. So uh, we'll put a bit of what this update is. Um, item number thirteen point three, uh coast update, this is all.
Yes, sir. Um, from Friday, Mr. Yumis was not able to be here on Friday. So the ladies of Hampton County, all of the ladies, we just want you to know, we do appreciate you, so when you get stressed out. And we would like to drive your party, so there's your holiday weekend party.
I wouldn't hear either.
I'm so sorry you missed out.
Any, any other?
That's it, that's it, okay.
And now item number fourteen, administrative report, uh finance report.
I have nothing, uh, but I will turn my attention to our new finance director, anything today is.
The only thing that's going on, which is very important, we're starting the training for the Springbrook implementation, we're still on, we're still on. How do you call it, we're still um, we're still planning to be active, um, go live in July. Right now with some of the, the training, all we're doing is looking at what we have, where we've been. And just trying to work out the kinks and making sure approvals and the basic information is where we need to be before we go live. Data has already been imported into the system, so it looks like things are going to move quickly, we have a good implementation specialist. And we are just going to be training the rest of the week.
You repeat, what'd you say, name of that training, what'd you say?
Oh, Springbrook, the new software.
Oh.
It's the new software, so we're going to, we're going to be going live in July, but we're upgrading from QS one to Springbrook. And so this is a much more user friendly, more um, all encompassing and moving forward is, we're all excited. And the things that we can do is going to make, is going to make our lives much easier. And reports, documentation, even as far as purchase orders, it's going to make a lot of things easier.
So are your department heads involved with that?
Yes, that that training is coming for requisitions and then purchase orders and then time sheets eventually. But um, the purchase orders and requisitions is going to be easier to put things in. And not only that, supporting documentation, being able to view everything, that's going to be great too.
And that will be available for the public on the website, eventually. Well, I mean, the 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 fact that you're on the state, what are we doing there?
Well, this, this goes back to your strategic investments in this budget discussion, prioritizing upgrading the 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 digital system so we can remove human error. From counting numbers here in county, this goes back to us being more efficient. But yes, we we will have a clean report that Ms. Chanel will come up, come up with, present to you on a monthly basis as it relates to our. Uh, uh, financial state, um, as you know, the website, you can, you can see our spend on a monthly basis. So we hope to have some additional context on county finances posted to the website, uh, uh, once, once we flush, flush a few things out as well.
Is that all?
Yes, sir, that's all, that's all.
With that being said, we are on item number fifteen, present the session, um, this is legal matters regarding Hampton County county buildings. Uh. What is the uh federal council?
So move, check it.
Most of the day that's popular subject, any further questions? There's none, all those approved, they're going to the same session, show your approval by raising your right hand. Anyone oppose, anyone staying? We're now going to the same session, we have a recent file, five minutes, five minutes, gentlemen.